To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Allam.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor. Scott.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
If there are no changes that need to be made to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
So move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening. Takes us to approval of the minutes from our regular meetings on May 8th and May 22nd. If there are no corrections that need to be made, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No community input tonight. That takes us to our financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
I'll entertain any questions. I have just a couple noted on page six. Gilhaugen, $434,000 brings our total to date to $775,000 of an 8.8 some million dollar contract. So there will be some carryover on that into next year that will, I'll have to adjust the budget to that, to account for that. I had page 11, TeachWell, final quarterly payment for those services, $252,000 total of our programs. Page 12, we had an interest payment on the Valley Springs Fred Assam and High School bond issue, $159,400. Total bills and claims of $1.1,311,723. Advanced payments breakdown is listed for you. Then we have a whole bunch of pay vouchers. It's kind of like looking at unclaimed property, see if your names are. Regular pay vouchers are first two pages, $170, or 87, or 77,000. Pay in lieu of personal days, $86,975. Pay in for unused sick days, $44,287. And then the food service bills. Total of $185,276. A lot of, as you can see, a lot of refunds of the senior accounts and whatnot.
All right. Any questions on the bills and claims tonight? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay. Continuing on the cash report for the month of May, had $9.6 million starting the month. Had a total receipts of $12,131,000. That's primarily due to a large, the second half of the tax draw coming in in May. Left $21.7 million to account for, $5.1 million of expenditures, and at the end of the month, $16,655,000. General fund had $10.8 million. Capital outlay fund had just shy of $3 million. Special education, $1.6 million. Bond redemption fund, $1.2 million, and the enterprise fund, $52,000. That $12,124,000 is itemized on the next two pages. Like I said, the tax draw is included in there, so that's a major portion of it. Payroll and benefits for the month of May, $2,627,000. Investment report of $2,027,000 listed for your review. And the financial statements through May, first two pages are the revenues. Most all the revenues, just a little bit of the tax draw that comes in in June, the second half. So that shows where we come in on that. Generally, we come in at 99.5% of the people pay their taxes on time and in full. The only one we, I just found out today, the utility tax, the third item on that first page, $750,000. We received $200,000 from Alliance, basically, for theirs. And the remaining portion is, for the most part, from Sioux Valley Energy. And that came in, that's $530,000, so pretty close to budget. Percentages are listed there. In the general fund, we'll, estimating that it'll be right at 100% of budget. We had 65 kids below our projection, which amounted to $450,000 deficit there. But we picked up $100,000 of extra bank franchise taxes. An extra two, quarter of a million in Esser funds this year, and just other miscellaneous $100,000. So it should be very, very close to 100%. The expenditure side, the general fund is at 90.5%. I'm estimating that to come in at 99.5 to 99.8. Should be in the area of a couple hundred thousand dollars underspent on the expenditure side. Capital outlay fund is at 85% of budget. The big one there is the construction project at the high school. There'll probably be three quarters of a million dollars left on that project to continue into July of next year or so. Obviously, will be underspent, that amount. Special ed is at 91.09, so that should finish the year right around 100. And bond redemption. The food service statement shows a net loss of just under $180,000. That'll be right where it will be at the end. It was a budget of $260,000. So that's what we planned on and what we needed in that fund. Lastly, the trust and agency statement, $192,000 of amounts held for others. Any questions?
If there are no questions on the financial report, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So move.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you again, Mr. Lombard. All right, general business. First item, administration reports. Administrative Center Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to update the board on here this evening. Regarding the 2023 school board election, we had one petition filed. That was filed by LA Saxor, so there was no election necessary. So congratulations, Member Saxor, for your election. Your term will be July 2023 to June 26. Continue to navigate, or continue to monitor the navigator pipeline. Want to note that the Brandon Valley School District Administrative Office website will be, will be updated. We will launch a new, a new looking website, so be looking for that here end of June, beginning of July. Big thank you to our tech staff for all their work on that. The 2122 Special Education Performance Report Card is available on the South Dakota Department of Education website. I just pulled a couple of real, real high level numbers off for you. These are proficiency rates in the area of reading and math, grades four, eight, and 11 for students that take the smarter balanced assessment, the regular assessment. So just, just a real high level overview of what that, what that looks like. But that full report is out there for anyone, including the public, to view. In terms of the budget process, we will hold our budget hearing here on July 17th. Following the public budget hearing, there will be potential for action. Next year academic calendar, we bring our new staff in on August 15th. And then we have a number of in-service and workshop days. Our first day for students grades one through 12 will be August 23rd. Our first day for kindergartners will be August 25th. And our first day for early childhood will be August 28th, utilizing that Wednesday, Thursday for kindergarten visits. Eastside Elementary School construction. Again, want to just note, we're engaged with, we're engaged with Architecture Incorporated. That's actually a contract that you are approving here this evening for their services, for that project. We will bid that project in November or December. Construction will begin in the spring of 2024. It'll be under construction all of the 24, 25 school year, and will be open in the fall of 2025. Again, want to, want to continue to note that no additional tax burden will be placed on our patrons as it is our intent to fund that through capital outlay certificates. High school addition project, no change in terms of priorities or any of those respective items. Area A, B, and C, those walkthroughs, looking to get those all finalized here in the end of June. And then remaining punch list items, warranty work, loose ends, will go in July. We have furniture set up for delivery in the middle of July. And then our chemistry lab and the restrooms that are inside the building that are going to be renovated, those will not be ready until the middle of August. I believe August 15th is the, is the date we have on those. So overall, progress continues, and we are staring at the finish line. Ways to go, but we'll get there. This is an image of area A and B, just exterior site work. That's actually even changed a little bit today. They poured the remaining curb and gutter, as well as some sidewalks up on the north end. Again, exterior site, you can see, you can see the, this is where the sidewalk is coming in and poured in. If you happen to drive out on the north side, you would see that that's already been poured. Again, area C, exterior site work. Area A restroom, so these are the restrooms that are in room 115. Do I have the room right? So this used to be room 115, and now this is ultimately a restroom that is in the corridor that will attach our existing school with our new addition. Again, just another shot of the area A restroom. They're very similar to the middle, the newly renovated and remodeled middle school restrooms. If you've been in the commons any time in the middle school here as of late. This is the area A corridor. Do want to note, this is the corridor that will receive the, it's like a sports surfacing for running. Ultimately, it's a soft surface that allows our athletes to, it's durable. It's allowed to be used for, for obviously, the hallway business and all that. But our track athletes and our power, power and conditioning folks will be able to utilize that sports, that sports surface for running. Area A classrooms, the final clean has been completed, and the punch list items are in progress. So the little blue pieces of tape identifying the, the missed paint spots, et cetera, are what we're working through now in area A. This is the area A and B vestibule. So if you can remember the temporary construction wall, the very first temporary construction wall that our kids painted, that's where this was located. So that temporary construction wall spanned basically the entirety of that corridor. Construction was going on outside to the east, and obviously, inside we're having school. But very, very nice, large, open vestibule, excited to have that in our high school. This is an area B corridor, so ultimately, what you're, what you're staring at is the corridor that goes to the north. And then you will get to approximately five or six stairs. So this is running right next to the, right next to the ramp hallway. You'll walk down this corridor, and then you'll get to five or six, five or six stairs, and then be able to go down that respective, those stairs to get into area C, ground level. Area B, the final cleanings are in progress. And this is another one that I wanted to certainly highlight. So this is the area, what I would call BC vestibule. So this is a very large, open, open space between area B and C that has obviously exterior doors going out. This would be directly located by like our EL classroom, if you're, the print shop. If you're familiar with the print shop area or the EL classroom, that's located directly down, down in this area. Area C classroom, so interior construction is currently in progress. I would say about 90% of our area C classrooms have sheet rock and whatnot. But most of them are sheet rocked, taped, textured, and either painted or being painted here as we, as we speak. Again, area C, mud tape texture in progress. Madam Chair, that is all I have for you this evening. I would certainly entertain any questions that you have.
I do have a question that, that set of doors between B and C, that big area, what's that entrance mainly going to be used for? In and out for staff, in and out for students?
It is not a main entrance, so it will not be like the bus drop off. The bus drop off will be further to the north where there are double doors. It is ultimately, it is ultimately an entrance into your building.
So you said further north is for the, going to be the bus drop off?
Yep. I'll show you. I would anticipate.
Because the main doors, as in sec, in area A, that.
This is, that's the area A and B vestibule.
And then.
And so this is, this would be the main drop off for your buses, where your kids will enter. Yep, on our, on our, would be on our east side. This would be that bus entrance for those respective kids. And then.
The one further to the north.
The one further to the north is just an entrance. It'd be utilized, there's teacher parking over there. There certainly could be some folks who use that for area C, if their classroom is down there. But that's not one of the doors that we will have open in the mornings for students to come in and out of. We will continue to utilize.
West.
The east and the west main entrance. Yep, you got it. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional? High school, Mr. Schluckaway? Middle school, Dr. Nelson? Okay. Intermediate school, Mr. Gibson? Okay. Anything from any of the elementaries? No? Okay. Mr. Henshaw, anything tonight? All right. No board policy, so that takes us to our first item under general business, to approve a real estate letter of intent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a situation that we have been working on and working through for a number of months. Ultimately, I'm just going to go down to the image to start. So this is not really very pretty, and I'm showing my, what do they call that, digital? Yeah, it's like when you can make things really graphic, help me. Thank you. Yes, I'm not a graphic designer, as proven by this image, but I did want to give you a real solid understanding of what we were talking about. So the black box that says BVSD 49-2 Inspiration Elementary, that is where Inspiration Elementary is located. And then, as you can see, as you can see directly to the south here, is the Sioux Falls City Park. And that's a joint, that's a joint collaborative working relationship that we've had with the city, just like at Fred Assam, City, City of Sioux Falls Park, in conjunction with our respective elementary school. There's some costs associated and shared, et cetera, but it's ultimately built on City of Sioux, Sioux Falls property. The 40 acres of land that we are talking about are directly south of Inspiration Elementary. I would also tell you that the Brandon Valley School District owns this parcel down here, which is approximately 20 acres. So this 40 acre parcel that is owned by Good Sam, in conjunction with Good Sam Sanford Health, with their, with their purchase of them, et cetera. So this 40 acres is ultimately located directly south of Inspiration Elementary, and also directly north of the 20 acres that we own down here. It would give us, it would give us a continuous 60, for lack of a better phrase. This 40 acres fits extremely well into future plans and long range plans and long range development. I would tell you that we have had some high level conversations and collaborative conversations with the City of Sioux Falls to see if there is any need that they may have for a piece of this. As we worked with them in a number of ways, along with the city park, et cetera. We're working through some of those respective items about what they may need and how that may fit into this respective area. But ultimately, what this allows us to do is this allows us to move our intermediate school south, or the new intermediate school that we will have, up towards Inspiration Elementary and give us that campus-like feel that we have with RBE and our, our current intermediate school. In addition to that, it gives us a substantial amount of respective ground for future, future usages in the areas of transportation, maintenance, and a number of other respective items. So again, it's 40 acres of land. It is all sewerable. There has been some wetland delineation or credits already purchased on it. Important to note, 45th Street will go through. That is something City of Sioux Falls, so this line right here, there will, 45th Street will go through there. That is something that is required in accordance to their planning and their zoning and their need for infrastructure. So the 40 acres that we are talking about is located directly south of Inspiration Elementary, directly north of BVSD's current property. Would note that the, the purchase price is $89,500 per acre for a total purchase price of $3.6 million and change. We have the room to manage that expense through capital outlays certs at this, at this point in time. Tentatively, that's what we're planning. I would tell you that, I don't know if that's definitive, but tentatively, that's the route we're planning. Mr. Lombard and I continue to work through those respective conversations to bring forward, to see if there's any other viable, viable options in terms of paying for it. But we certainly have the space available in capital outlay certs. With that, would certainly recommend approval of the real estate letter of intent. That will initiate them to draft their purchase agreement, at which time we take said purchase agreement, run through our respective legal, do all of our due diligence in terms of, like I said, they have purchased wetland credits, all of that respective jazz. Would anticipate, beginning to end, I'm hopeful that we can be looking at a September closing, September, October closing, and we'll go from there. But this would be the first step in getting all of that rolling. And then in, of course, if we finance through certs, there's going to be some, some issuance and some approvals and all of those things coming here in the course of the next few months. But would certainly recommend approval of the purchase of this 40 acres. Would certainly entertain any questions you have.
Out of that 40 acres, you're saying the school would be on the south side of that 45th?
Yes.
What are we using for the school? I mean, what's our intermediate school sitting on right now? Obviously, like you said, there'd be more room for a transportation hub.
Yeah. I think what I would say is if you looked at.
Out of that 40 acres, yeah.
Look, if you look at the image, I would tell you that the 20 acres you have down here for the intermediate school, I will do a poor job of saying it would be, it would probably be in about this space. And then you would have, it'd take about 20-ish. More green space is always better than less green space and whatnot, but approximately 20.
Any other questions for Superintendent Larson?
From a transportation perspective, are we anticipating three locations over the near to intermediate term? Or would we just move it to the two at the new school and here?
Mr. Bell, I think that's a conversation to have on a, at a transportation committee level meeting. I could see you going satellite facility here on the east side. And then in a matter of five to 10 years, you have the ability then to make some, make some additional decisions. You could potentially vacate your current place and build something that is very, very large. Or you could move to two primary stations with one satellite for your propane. I would say that, again, the, just having this space because of its proximity to both of those schools lends itself to be very, very helpful and fruitful in the decades to come as we deal with growth.
I got one question. That road that you're talking about being put in there, 45th or whatever it is?
Yep, it'll be right here.
Yeah. Okay. Just looking at how flu, how easy the flow of students and transportation is at our Robert Bennett's intermediate school now, will this road have some hiccups to adjust to as far as?
I would say it will impede upon.
Anything else that needs to be discussed? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the real estate letter of intent to the Good Sam Society/ Sanford Health for 40.5 acre tract for Majestic Meadows addition to the City of Sioux Falls in the amount of $3,624,750, as presented.
So move. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve items two through seven as presented.
So move. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 17.
So move.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number 18's for information only is a transfer. There are some items for communication under the building permits, if you choose to look at those. Board of Education, there is a thank you there for employee recognition banquet and gift card. And with that, we get to our formal board reports. Does anyone have a formal report they'd like to share tonight?
The official now resignation for Wade Pogony, he has done as of the first of this month, so just wanted to kind of give that note. The other is that you probably have seen in your email inboxes that the ASBSD conference is set. The dates are in August. I believe it's August 4th and 5th. I can double check on that. But if that is a conference that you are able to attend, interested in attending, that is a great conference for learning and also just getting to know others that are in school districts across the state. And so please let Dr. Larson and Jennifer know if you're interested in registering.
Thank you.
Safety committee met on the 31st of May. We talked a lot about, obviously, the overall school year. Officer Sarda commented a lot about the, the different calls and the reports that went on throughout the year. He had said they were probably up roughly 20% more than the past years. A lot about social media, the vaping, the drugs, TikTok. A lot about social media, the vaping, the drugs, TikTok pranks, obviously, ongoing, and we're learning more and more on how to see something, say something, that sort of stuff. With that being said, the Carroll Institute and Southeast, we have renewed contracts with them, through them, huge service that they provide for us, and very helpful in all avenues. The social media presentation for the middle school, high school, the Steered Straight, that was overwhelming, positive feedback, a lot of students learning what needs to be taught, and, and they, let's just say their eyes were open, I believe. A lot of feedback was, was great. The, there's active shooting training that was going on or going to be coming, so that's going to be huge for our staff, so they can pass that on. Spot checking around the building happened. Overall, extremely happy with what, what was found. There's always going to be things that we can tweak and do a better job, whether that's doors, whether that's cameras. So just to let you know, there's, there's always things we can do better, and we're, we're doing them. So appreciate everything that makes it go very safe and smooth, so. Student medic, the medical situations, there, there was a couple, and that was a huge success for everyone involved. The student itself, themselves, were okay, and that's the main relief. The situation, when it, when it occurred, the, the staff acted very, very quick. The students were very helpful, they, they did everything that they were supposed to, so overall, the situation proved that we're, we're doing stuff right. And that's what I had. If David had anything else involved?
From TeachWell, just a couple of things, I had to pull up my phone here to try to remember. We, Joan, the director of TeachWell, texted me that we received a message back on May twenty-fourth. A message of the virtual SLP video entitled Ben's Story was submitted by Lawrence and Schiller, and they won a Telly Award, which is a silver award, and this is kind of a big deal. It's an international award group with over twelve thousand entries, and so it was, you know, go to their website and kind of check it out, it's pretty cool. And she, she also went on to say this was a fabulous year, she appreciates the BV support and leadership. She especially gave a shout-out to Mr. Schluckaway with his help with some of the high school kids, and then she did, she did send a cute picture that her academy boys, those who came early in their trucks and tailgated for breakfast, they brought their flat-top propane grill and made pancake sausages and eggs, and then they posed for this picture pretending she was under the truck, so it was kind of funny. So it's, it's been a good year, and the, it just seems to, you know, keep growing and, and developing, so very proud of TeachWell and being able to be involved in the alternative school, so. Anyone have anything else? All right. Well, I'm hearing the drums already going, so band is starting early already, but that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming.